Okay. Good evening. Today is Thursday, May 4th. This is the Hyde Park Central School District Board of Education meeting. I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss personnel matters, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Thank you all for coming out to see us tonight. At this time, I have a motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? All in favor? Sorry. Don't hit it again. At this point, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, Jim, I lied. It's code of conduct first. Sorry about that. At this time, we will open a public hearing. Do we need a motion to get into a public hearing?
I think so.
Oh.
Won't hurt.
It won't hurt. Can I have a motion to enter into a public hearing? For budget and code of contact.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that? All in favor? So we're going to do the budget first? There you go.
Okay. Good evening. So tonight, I'll be talking about the budget. There's four propositions that'll be on the May 16th ballot. The budget was adopted by the Board of Education on April 6th. The presentation tonight is the presentation that we've had that same night. And so like I said, there'll be four propositions. The first is the general operating budget of $91,733,017. That represents a budget-to-budget increase of 1.43%. Under the tax cap, we're allowed to raise taxes by 2%, but the proposed tax levy is lower than the allowable tax levy and represents a 1.26% increase. The proposed levy of $58,678,866 is $426,132 less than the allowable levy of $59,104,998. So this slide shows the expenditures and revenues budget broken down into the different categories. As I just stated, the budget-to-budget increase is 1.43%. That's an increase of $1,295,363. And the $730,154 tax levy increase is a 1.26% increase, even though under the tax cap, the district could raise taxes by 2%. That 1.26% represents the change in the inflation rate. So the budget is comprised of three components: program, administrative, and capital. We are required to provide the breakdown between the components to the voters. Program costs include regular and special education instruction, co-curricular activities, athletics, and transportation. Administrative costs include Board of Education costs, central administration, finance, legal, and the Human Resources Office. A good benchmark for us for admin costs is 10%. We are below that at 9.27%. And capital includes facilities, operations, and maintenance, debt service, and capital outlay projects. So this table provides more detail of the component budget. It shows the program admin capital broken down into each expenditure area. It's important to note here that the total salaries and benefits, so salaries is the first line and benefits are the last line, that totals 77.8% of the total budget. And we're comparable to other districts in the state because the state average is 80%. So except for emergencies, all transfers to capital projects must be approved by the voters, and we're required to provide information to the community on how we plan to use those transfers. So the State Education Department allows us to have one cash capital project each year, up to $100,000, for which we will receive the full amount of aid in the year following the project. So the 2017-18 general fund budget calls for a $100,000 transfer to capital projects for the purpose of a bathroom project at the middle school. So at our current building aid ratio of 60%, the net cost or local share for this project would be $40,000. The second proposition is for the purchase of nine 66 passenger buses. After state aid of approximately 57.6%, the cost would be $416,464. The third proposition is for authorization to have a student board member. As long as the district wishes to have a student board member, this proposition must be on the ballot every two years. So finally, the fourth proposition is for the establishment and funding of a $5 million capital reserve. If approved, the funds would be used for the next capital project, at which time we would need voter approval again to use the funds. This reserve would be funded through existing fund balance. It would not be part of the 2017-18 budget or the tax levy. So a capital reserve is a really good way of saving money because unlike unassigned fund balance or savings with no specific purpose, the voters must give authority to fund it and to spend the money. So when it's time to spend the money from a capital reserve, we have to have another vote. And at the current aid ratio of 60%, we would receive $3 million back in state aid after expending this reserve, and we'd also complete the next project with $5 million less in debt. We actually have a current reserve of $2 million. So if we combine the two, we'd have $7 million less in debt for the next project, and we would receive $4.2 million back in aid. So the New York State offers rebates under the property tax relief credit to certain qualified homeowners. In order to receive the credit, a taxpayer must receive a star exemption, earn less than $275,000, and reside in a school district that is tax cap compliant. So because the district is tax cap compliant for 2017-18, any of our qualified taxpayers would receive that rebate next year. There's information on this screen. It's a link to New York State, and it would give information on how much each person could expect to receive. So if the budget isn't approved by the voters, the district has three options. We could resubmit the same budget or revise budget for a vote again on June 20th, or we could go straight to contingency. If we went straight to contingency, we could have no increase in the tax levy, and we'd have to have reductions in the budget of $903,838. So the items listed on the left side of the screen are considered non-contingent, and they must be removed from a contingent budget. So if removing those items weren't enough to bring the tax levy to a 0% increase, the district would have to consider other budget cuts. The items listed on the right-hand side of the screen are non-mandated, and they could be reduced from a contingency budget. However, for 2017-18, that wouldn't be a concern for us because we do have enough savings from the non-contingent items. So this is the actual calculation of the contingent budget. So if the school district were to go to contingent budget for 2017-18, all the items listed here would have to be removed from the budget. So those include salary increases for non-union staff, so $38,159. All equipment of $641,545. Student supplies, $124,134. And that transfer to capital projects for the bathroom project would have to be removed, too. That's $100,000. So under the contingency, the budget-to-budget increase would be 0.43%, and the tax levy increase would be 0%. So that's all I have for the presentation. Tonight is also the last night to register to vote. There are some people in the room next door, so if anybody's here that needs to register, they can do that now. And the school budget vote and the board member election is on May 16th at Havilland Middle School from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Does the board have any questions? Or comments?
I think we do. We open up for the... Anybody here who would like to ask a question or make a comment? If you could step to the podium so that the people in TV land can see it?
I do. I do have one question.
You have one question? Okay.
I do. I just keep forgetting. So I'm sorry. It was one point... I just closed my screen. It was the budget was what kind... What increase?
The budget-to-budget is 1.43%.
Okay. And what would that percent... What would that be if it was... If we had to go to contingency?
It would be 0.43%.
So it's a difference of 1%?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Sure.
$900,000.
I had the number. I didn't have the percent. Okay.
All right. Would anybody like to...
One quick question. It just occurred to me. You said that the non-contingent items have to be removed.
Yes.
Which means we... If, depending on how many we had, we could actually wind up reducing the budget below the 0% possibility, in other words, we could wind up with a negative increase if the contingent... Because we can't maintain those items at all.
Yep. So the actual tax levy increase in the proposal is the $730,000, $730,154.
Right.
And the items that we have to take out total the $908,000. So there is a difference. So we wouldn't have to have a lower than a 0% increase because we could just adjust the amount that we're appropriating from fund balance.
Okay.
Just that the law is that the tax levy can't be more than 0%.
Anybody else before I open it up again? Would anybody like to address the board concerning the budget? Now, Judge Brand.
Quick question. Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to address you folks. First of all, I don't envy the job you have to do. It's not easy. I have some observations I'd like to make and perhaps a question or two. And notwithstanding my current position, which some of you are aware of, I really come to most of my actions in life as a businessman. I've owned businesses over the years and put budgets together and so forth. Just from looking at some past budgets, back in 2010, when there were roughly 4,200 students, the budget was at $79 million, roughly $18,500 per student. 2012, there was a school closed, and we've seen a continual drop in enrollment. Now, of course, if I'm in business and one of my seven plants is not operating well and I close it, you would expect that the overall budget would decrease because obviously you have less expenses. It may not be exactly a 1/7 decrease, but obviously with one less plant, you're going to have less employees, less heat, air conditioning, insurance, maintenance, and the like. However, with the student enrollment decreasing, the budget continues to go up, as we know, roughly a million and a half a year. And this year, with less students, we're at $91,733 million, give or take. And within the next five years, if we keep going the direction we're going, we'll be at, for the first time, a new mark, $100 million budget in the small community, which may not seem like a lot of money to some people, but to me it does. And with the student enrollment declining and at $100 million budget in a few years, you'd be talking roughly $30,000 per student, which again, to me, seems to be quite a bit of money. And I understand this is government; this isn't private business. And I just... I guess my inquiry is if anybody has any plan in place to try and stop the growth because I have this concern that we could end up being number one in the country with the cost per student. And I look at the nationwide average was in 2014. It was roughly $11,000, and I don't want to compare us to some of the other states, but it's a lot of money. And I don't know if there's a group on this board that's put together to try and have cost containment or anything of that nature because, again, just as a taxpayer, to be going up a million and a half a year as the enrollment declines, I dread to think what would happen if it was increasing. So it's my comment, and I guess my question, if there is any plan for even a group made up perhaps of this board and also people in the community to try and find ways to see if this exponential increase cannot somehow be contained. And I don't know if anybody here wants to chew on that at all.
You want to think of where can that... Anybody? I guess I'd start with saying, which I mentioned before when we were talking, that this is a very expensive state to live and work in. If... The last five years, the budget has gone up at either the cost of living increase or less, actually. Yet our costs from the state and from healthcare, healthcare goes up 14%, 15%. A pension fund is, I think, 20% less than last year, but it's still 14%. It's... We haven't been given out large raises, though I understand, you know, some people don't get any. But I mean, 1 1/2% raises, but not including STEP. STEP is another... That's another state thing that we get. So the state... The tribal amendment, you know, for... So the cost of doing business goes up much, much faster than the supposed 2% tax cap is going to keep it down. That would be my explanation. But I don't see any reason why we couldn't have a committee of some side with people from the community to look at that. I think if we spent time and everybody understood what was actually in the budget and what the pressures that we have to meet and the things, the mandates that we have to meet, it would go a long way to people understanding why things are going up. That's not to say they couldn't be less, but I think it's a good idea.
I think...
But there are factors that have made that happen.
I think also if you bring in certain leaders in the community, they would also be able to have insight and perhaps relationships with other people in our state government that maybe not everybody in this room does because, you know, people know people, that they could try and work and find some way to address it. That's why I suggested it, so.
May I come in?
Yes, sure. Absolutely.
I would just also point out that it's not a straight reciprocal relationship. You know, as, you know, the cost per student, you know, isn't just a specific cost. You know, because our enrollment goes down, it doesn't proportionally... Our budget doesn't proportionally go down, you know, as each student is kind of eliminated in our population.
Right.
So that is a complicated relationship to look at as well.
Well, you know, I fully understand. That's why I mentioned, but closing one whole school, you would expect at least to be some decline, maybe not, you know, the same, not 1/7th, but certainly some decline. But it immediately spiked up. So that's why I was mentioning that. All right.
All right. The closing actually did save $4 million.
Pardon?
It did save $4 million. The closing of Hyde Park Elementary...
Over time.
Yeah, over time, yeah.
Over time, yeah.
$1 million first year.
Yeah, per year, but it's been...
But we've... You look at the budget, it's actually gone up, you know, from that time. Like I say, we're closing in on $100 million, which will be a milestone. I'm not sure it's necessarily a good milestone, but it's a milestone.
All right, folks. Actually, just so before... The other factor is special aid costs have been going up much higher, faster than probably anything. I don't know. Where's Aviva? Would agree that, yeah. But...
Yeah. And it's really the cost because I'll say that we have 57 students currently being served out of district that we can't serve in our district programs. When I started in 2010 as the Assistant Superintendent for People's Services, we had 115 students served out of district. The costs have gone up. So 57 students today cost more than 115 students in 2010.
See, but again, that may be something where if you get other minds involved, they could try and find some help.
Right. I'm just saying that those rates are set by the state, and so we don't... Those are the kinds of things we don't have control over, even though we've exercised a lot of oversight and building programs that are more efficient in-house. If we hadn't done that, it would be exponential. So that's just one piece.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I would add that as a district, we are often looking for outside influences. We look for the community to provide any expertise that they can. We have a DLT that we've reached out, and we've had community members who have been able to contribute. By all means, if there's somebody out there that feels that they've got something they want to contribute, you know, we're open to... Open to input. Not to mention, there's always member... There are seats on the board that are available that people can have a major impact, as major as you can have, one person can have. Tremendous number of unfunded mandates. It continues. I mean, one just came down this week that there is a requirement for us to... You know, and it may make sense. It's something where all the school districts need to meet with the county. The county executive is pulling together a team in attempts of trying to find cost avoidance or cost savings, and we'll participate in that as we will. You know, we're always open to that idea. We're always looking... We look for ways of working with the town in any expense sharing, you know, contributing so we don't have a redundancy of services or redundancy of efforts. So, you know, we're always looking for those opportunities. So if anybody's out there and got a great idea, bring it to us.
Yeah. We did a lot of work legislatively, too. When you talk about special education costs, New York State far exceeds the federal regulations. And if you take that to Albany, it is almost impossible to move that. If we could shift our special education costs to be in compliance with the federal, we would have a lot of savings. But New York State special education law far exceeds the federal. So I know I've been active on legislative committees not any longer after six years of pounding the pavement, six years plus, not seeing much movement. And Perry mentioned unfunded mandates, and they're well aware that, you know, the unfunded mandates are a burden to taxpayers, but there's been no reprieve in unfunded mandates and interpretations of how we have to service students. There's been an influx of... They change the name every year. Now it's English as new learners, new language learners. And the requirements... So for us, we don't have a tremendously large population of English language learners. The level of services we were offering before, if you asked an educator, they were wonderful. They were adequate. We were meeting the needs. But the new mandates now ratcheted it up and now cost a significant amount more. So, you know, we tried to lobby Albany to stop with the unfunded mandates, but there's really been no reprieve.
I'm not hearing a lot of optimism here tonight.
Yeah. Well, not on that. And with that said, you know, we do welcome, you know, any community members. We do look at cost-saving measures. One of the things that we did this year was we restructured our administrative team and our central office clerical. So right off the bat, we saved $100,000 easily just with eliminating one Assistant Superintendent position. So we've been downsizing, but even the downsizing that we've been able to do...
Doesn't offset enough.
Doesn't offset enough. Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much again, folks. I appreciate it.
I think one thing that you can't have a discussion about the cost of education without recognizing the quality of the education that's being produced at this point. I mean, the students... The experience that the students have in our district is better year after year after year, and that doesn't come without a cost. And I would say that the students walking out of these buildings today are a higher caliber, better educated, better career and college-ready than ever before. And I think that as a community, that's something we should be very proud of. And I don't just, you know, I'm not looking forward to that million-dollar or $100 million budget, but the possibility of slipping backward in the quality of the education that we're delivering isn't even a consideration my part.
We have maintained programs and functions while other districts have gotten rid of them, quite frankly, especially in an area of music. We've added new program called Project Lead the Way, which is an engineering venue that we're expanding downward. Started the high school, we're going to expand it downward eventually to the elementary schools. So you are getting... I agree with you, Perry. You are getting value with it. Could it be better? Could we get the same thing? And could somebody else come in and help us do it a little better? Sure. We... I think all of us on the board would welcome working with anybody that cared to want to join us, so.
Yeah. I would like to comment on what Perry said about the quality. The quality of the education is certainly very good. Our... The PLT program, I participated in that. The first year it was brought into the school as a program. And for me, it was kind of difficult. I don't think I'm an engineer, but a lot of the students that were in that class certainly enjoyed it, and you could tell that there was much success coming to the students and a lot to be learned as well. And it's always fantastic to see there's so many programs that are offered to our students. A lot of APs are offered and handled well, and so I can certainly attest that the quality of the schooling is fantastic.
All right. Thanks, James.
Steve Hughes, district resident. I just wanted to make a couple of observations on the... The thoughts have been floating around here. The first is that when Hyde Park Elementary was closed, it wasn't as if you had suddenly lost 300, 400 students from one year to next. It was a gradual decline, and there may have been a few teaching positions freed up. I don't recall, but a lot of the teachers from Hyde Park Elementary weren't other words. So I wouldn't have expected to see a huge decline other than, you know, the groundskeeping costs and things like that. The second is Ms. Steinberg's presentation really gave the explanation for why costs continue to rise, and that's 3/4 of your cost is salaries. And the school district continues to give out 2%, 3%, 3 1/2% increases when you include STEP. So really, the most effective way to fight the rising cost of education would be to lobby the state government to get rid of the tribal agreement because that's really what prevents the district from holding the line on increase in costs. And the third comment is I really think this board and this administration is to be commended for how you've held down costs. Anyone with a long-term memory can think back to the early 2000 before the 2% tax cap was put in place. There were routinely 5, 6, 7, sometimes... There were routinely five, six, seven, sometimes thirteen percent increases. This admin, and granted, the primary reason or the strongest incentive is the tax cap. But this board and this administration has routinely stayed under the tax cap without decreasing programs. So I think you deserve a strong round of applause for holding that line. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Steve, I just wanted to comment, you mentioned Triboro. And every lobby day that I attended, when you would go to Albany and just before they would let you in the room, they said, "You can talk about anything you want, you know, unfunded mandates, whatever you want, but don't even mention Triboro because there's no audience for it." So you'd spend your whole day at Albany and that was the one item you weren't allowed to even bring up with the legislators.
Yes.
Okay, would anybody else like to, yes, hello?
Hi, my name's Nick Runbeck. I went through the Hyde Park School District in the seventies and the eighties, and now my son is going through Netherwood as well. And I was going to say probably the opposite of what the first gentleman talked about. I'm looking for gifted programs for children. And I remember going, when I was going through it in Netherwood, there was gifted programs where kids had excelled in math or in writing or something, they went in early. I think my mother even actually taught some of those classes at, for a time there.
My oldest son was in that group.
Yep, Nathaniel, yeah. So, and so unless I've gotten wrong information, but I've spoke with the acting principal there and with the teachers, it doesn't seem to be any of those programs that exist in the elementary schools at this particular point. And I'd love to see something of that nature come back. And other things that sort of popped in my mind is, I know we start language, I guess, in the high school, but language seems to, as a young child, you pick it up so much quicker. Shouldn't we be thinking of ways to start a second language for students at the first grade level, at the second grade level, somewhere in there? And my third thing is, we just took my, my son to the Meet the Instrument night, which was a very nice program. But one of the teachers got up and said, "Make sure your kid makes it to the lesson because it's only happening once every fourteen days," when we would have a lesson. So rather, except for if my child takes an instrument, he's not going to have a lesson only twice a month. And again, this seems to me like, shouldn't we be getting them more once, twice a week so that they can start developing on that? So those are sort of my concerns that I see as a parent and would love to see the district try and, try and find ways to move in that, in that direction. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to comment on that? James?
So with the music program, I myself went through the music program, playing the violin in elementary school. And yeah, the lessons were pretty scarce. But I think it's more of guiding the students to want to learn it on their own because in high school, we do have more frequent lesson times. It's once a week. But most of the students that do excel well with the instruments do take private lessons. And also, our high school students actually teach each other sometimes. So concerning the music program, I think it's more of guiding them to kind of letting them like put their toes in the water before they actually dive into playing the instrument. And the instrument, playing an instrument is a lot of fun. So if your child enjoys, I'm sure he'll continue with it through middle school and high school.
All right, I just, I'll comment on the one, two, three, four, five, six as they were back then. I found that for most, I don't know, certainly for my children, it was fabulous because they could do whatever they wanted. I think there's a little bit more structure to the curriculum now. And I don't say that's good or bad, but I'm just saying it's a little more difficult.
I wasn't meaning the alternate programs if that's what you're referring to. It was something in addition to that that existed in terms of just finding ways that kids that were excelling in certain, we got a little extra so they didn't get bored.
Right.
I guess that's another thing that I'm, I feel that we've got, in my looking again as a parent, as the way the school system goes, and again, I'm just looking at the elementary. I can't speak to anything higher up than what I've seen and said. I worry that some students that, it just seems to be a single model, I guess, in how we, in how we try and teach the kids. And if a kid is good and focused and can play by the rules that the, of how the class needs to be run, that's great. But if the kid's a little advanced on something and gets bored, that doesn't, that doesn't, that's not a good match. And, or if a child is struggling on some ass, just a little bit on some ass, sometimes I feel that that doesn't get picked up either. So I'm just seeing sort of a teach-to-the-middle aspect going on in the, in the elementary school. And I don't know if, again, if this is, this is the Common Core, this is how the, it has to be based on New York State, or I just, I wish there could be a little bit more ways to try and find the best way to teach a child or more avenues open to a teacher. And if a teacher is struggling with finding a way to address a student's need, this is a large school district. I mean, it's not Arlington large, but it's large enough. And it seems that there's a large, there's a long history of teachers. And there should be a way that, a pool of knowledge, I guess, that somehow that you can go and, "Well, this wasn't working for this sort of student," or, you know, young boys in the first few years, they have a tough attention span and we're asking them maybe something that is beyond them, and how can we redirect and figure out a way to better engage them so that opportunities aren't missed, I guess. I, I had a couple of students that also went through, that they've, they've pulled their kids out of the public school system because they found that the kid was just going home with a red card or a yellow card for being, you know, misbehaving. But it could have just been, that's what the kid was, he wasn't mature enough to act in that way. And it started to have a bad effect on that child's, you know, self-worth. So they felt that it was necessary to take it, take the kid out of the school and find a different program that worked better. And so I've seen that a little bit with other students, and I think each year, my wife and I have seen a friend of my, that my, friends of my son, they get pulled out because they're finding that. And so I think something's amiss there. And so I would like, I'd like some more discussion. I'd like some looking to that.
Yeah, I actually meant by the alternate in that if you were in first grade and you could do secondary work, you did. And that is somewhat annoying, not what you're actually asking for.
I'm going off now here on a field of things.
Not exactly what you're asking for. Differentiation in classrooms is probably the hardest thing there is for a teacher to do and to do well. I think we have some that I know personally, I can't speak for the rest of them, that actually do that. But that's, that's, there's a reason why we have professional development and teacher training days is to get from where we are to a better place. And I think, you know, I've been here a long time on the board, and it's getting better. It is getting better. Is it getting better as fast as you would like it and, you know, maybe perhaps I would like? Perhaps not. I see the district rising in that regard. So I'm kind of positive on what we're, what we're doing, maybe.
Yeah, a couple of things. I would love to get together and pick your brain and find out what your experiences are. You know, on the, on the intervention side, that's a really well-oiled, data-driven. We have academic intervention services. Our students are identified every step of the way with a multi-tier intervention. It's all clearly defined in our academic intervention plan that once you fall this below, you get this tier of intervention. So our intervention services are really well-oiled. And if ever someone felt like they weren't receiving intervention, you know, we'd want to know immediately because we have several systems in place. We employ several teachers to deliver intervention services. In fact, that's their title. They're an AIS teacher for language arts or AIS for math. And depending on the level of intervention that a child needs, you know, they either get it in class or pull out. We have a comprehensive summer program this year, now even adding a middle level. So I'm confident that we have a superior intervention system. So again, if somebody was experiencing, they didn't feel they were getting interventions, you know, we would want to know immediately. With the differentiation in the classroom, we don't have right now a formal program, but our expectation is that if a student is above grade level or is capable of doing more challenging work, that is being provided. So we would definitely want to know if you're feeling like the challenging work isn't there. We don't have a formalized program in place for that now. We're looking more at adding a lot more in the way of enrichment. We've added, you know, more clubs. We're looking to do more of that. We'd like to see more robotics at the elementary level to engage students. And a lot of what we're looking at is that high-level engagement, so you're not losing somebody just because they're bored. We can do more in that area. We're looking to do more. We do have some summer programs that are enrichment, our STEM camp, Camp Invention, things like that. But we'd love to be able to do more in that area. World Language, I would love to add a world language program. We haven't gotten that far. We had a lot of work to do to really embrace all of the changes and be fiscally responsible. So, you know, that's been something that other districts have pulled forward with, and we need to look at that. There are districts that face more financial challenges than we do, and they've managed to bring in Mandarin. So that's definitely something that would be a next step for us. So I'd love to talk to you and your family and even if you wanted to get together with some other parents, we'd love to hear your experiences and get your input.
Great.
I just want to add, I'm sorry, I want to add just a couple of things, and then I'd love to be part of that conversation as well. So I just wanted to give one example. So, you know, years ago, the standard way that reading was taught in kindergarten was like a letter of the week. You know, there'd be a lot of worksheets, it would be a week. And where we're at now is that we really recognize that some children come in, four years old, English is their second language, they may not speak very much English, and other children come in fluent readers. So our program now is completely individualized. We have Reader's Workshop and Writer's Workshop. We have an consultant from Columbia who's now in her second year working with us. So it's really engaging right at the student's level, and that's recognized. That's just one example. And the only other one I'll give is that we're really just embarking on this four Cs work, which is Twenty-First Century Learning, Twenty-First Century Skills. So really recognizing that critical thinking, communication, creativity, and collaboration are Twenty-First Century Skills. So we are focused in our district leadership team on critical thinking for the next several years and doing, you know, curriculum work, looking at units, how are we really engaging students at all grade levels? So it's not just a high school initiative. So we recognize that creativity and critical thinking are, I think, have always been a bedrock of gifted education, and we're really trying to infuse that for all kids. And we're just at the beginning of that, but we're already seeing that. And I think that the Common Core, as it has been ingested, we're able to be more creative and step away a little bit from more of a regimented approach. So we're really starting to kind of get back to that joy of teaching and joy of learning that I think some of us lost for a while.
I'd like to point one thing out about our one-to-one initiative in our middle school. Each child has a Chromebook like this one. And that allows for, I think it will facilitate differentiation in that kids can be working on their Chromebook, doing something collectively while the teacher can see what they're doing and give other work to somebody who can do more work. So I, I think that's going to help, actually, so.
Oh, I do want to say, yeah, I do think there is a lack of a gifted program in the elementary schools. But we are also judging with class sizes of thirty kids. It's a little unfair to have the teachers try to differentiate the classroom with that.
Well, yeah, I totally understand that aspect.
And my daughters were lucky enough, when Violet Avenue had differentiated, they had the needy, the needs, it was a smaller class, and then they broke them down between math and science, between the two classes. But when we started pushing and making sure we were keeping at the thirty kids, it's not a program you could keep going because you had three classes, and then the next year, they only had two. And it's not a program you could keep in splitting it up into three categories when you only have two. So when we're looking at and we're pushing this thirty kids, it's a lot of pressure we have to put on the teachers to try to differentiate into three categories from it.
Is there a maximum at which the number of students, is thirty the top limit?
That's the max.
And is that, again, by the, the state says no more than thirty, or is that, is that just the, the district has said?
Locally negotiated.
Because twenty or eighteen would be ideal, I imagine, right? I mean, if we could get something.
Yeah, but if we're at eighteen, we're not being officially responsible, which would be done in two classes.
Thank you.
I would point out that once you get to the middle school and the high school, the opportunities for advanced students become much greater. There are opportunities for AP courses, there are opportunities for advanced language courses, and there are opportunities for exploring other courses that may not be necessarily involved directly in your grade points or in your diploma. Those things at the middle, at the elementary schools, it just can't be implemented. You know, when my kids went to school, they started in the early seventies, seventies through eighty-eight, I think I had my eight kids in school over that broad range. And the thing that became an issue that had to be dealt with was the fact you couldn't differentiate and take the class, you had a class level of first grade level or a second grade, a third grade of a hundred students or ninety students, let's stay with the thirty class, and take thirty of the poorest students and put them in one class, thirty of the middle-range schools and put them in the second class, and thirty of the higher-range school students and put them in the third class. There were, there you could teach to the level of the students. So there you were getting, you know, the students getting dealt with. But that became a no-brainer as you examined the results it had on the overall educational population. The kids at the lower level never saw where they could get to, and they never strived to get any stronger. So this, you know, grading the kids or breaking the kids up according to abilities was something that, you know, was frowned on and finally pushed away. You couldn't, you really didn't want to do that. So you spread the kids out. And that's when, you know, recently differentiated instruction is an ability. And as Doug pointed out, and Jeff, at the middle school now, using the Chromebooks, you can differentiate the instructions effectively. And we had a presentation, I don't know if it's available, can people ask for older presentations? Steve, Steve records our things. There was a presentation given to us a while back by a middle school math teacher talking about the Chromebook. And this woman had done an absolutely fantastic job of differentiated instructions. She came up with software that was supported by Chromebook, what she called a dashboard. And basically what allowed her at any point in time to switch the screen she had in front of her on her Chromebook to see what every student was doing on their Chromebook at the same time and discover and where they were and which ones were struggling to get, you know, like step three and step four in the solving of a problem, whereas the other ones are already done. And the thing she found was interesting enough, the students that had completed the problem were in discussions about what else could we do with this problem? What else could we learn from this problem? They were advancing themselves without the teacher involvement. And she was able to concentrate on the two or three students that were really struggling and identifying that because the kids didn't come for help. But when she looked at the screens and saw what they were doing, she could actually interrupt where she was going and go to these people. So the Chromebooks and the technologies are offering us an opportunity to really get to a successful differentiated instruction at the levels where you, where you need to get it to get these students moving forward. And as you move into the middle school, the middle school now offers you move into the middle school, the middle school now offers honest classes. So you can take high school level courses at the middle school level, which frees up your cards at the high school level to advance. In other words, instead of coming in, taking, you know, the first level of math, you can be at the second level of math. The first level of language, you can be at the second level of language. This allows you opportunities. My kids, the one thing they found that was lacking was there wasn't enough periods for them to take a lunch because they were taking science courses, they were taking math courses, they'd take music courses and stuff like that. So their curriculum was filled without a study hall. And that's another way of expanding the students up there. But it is a stress on the students. Because my kids didn't come running home at the end of the school day. They ran in several other directions, the baseball field, the soccer field, the basketball court, the music lessons. My daughter couldn't be satisfied with just sports. She actually lobbied for two years, I'm surprised she never became a politician, with the music department to finally work out a situation in which she could, between the winter program and the spring program, participate in the sports and get ready for those sports programs and still participate in the music performance for the school play, the high school play. She was permitted to learn the music on her own, show up at the rehearsals and demonstrate that she understood it and participate in that. She looked for things, to do more things than she could, you know. The only thing she gave up was eating and sleeping, but, you know, she survived that. And guess what she is now? Now she's a teacher. It's hard to believe.
All right, Dan.
May I, I'm sorry, may I just kind of make one quick comment?
Sure.
I'd just like to thank you for coming here tonight. And I really encourage you to have that meeting with Greer and Aviva. You know, I've been lucky enough to have my two kids come through the district and have been very pleased, very pleased. They've done really well and their quality of education is, I've been, as you all know, I've been around here, you know, pounding the pavement for a long time. And the quality of education has never been something that I've questioned. So I encourage you to stay involved and keep coming back and stay with us. We could always improve.
Yeah, we don't want people leaving.
Yeah, no, no, do you know what I mean? And, you know, and, you know, there's always room for improvement. But there's really a lot to offer and I hope that you'll look for that.
Hi, my name is Michelle Seacomis, speech therapist at Violet Avenue. And I don't know if it makes you feel any better, eases your mind, but everything that's on your wish list, I wish teachers could, I wish teachers did, I wish they had, that I see every day. I'm in and out of a bunch of classrooms and I see teachers who absolutely accommodate emotional, physical, cognitive needs. And there's, it is a much richer and more vivacious environment than the one that I think that you're seeing. And I see teachers buying children clothing who don't have clothing. I see them buying Christmas presents for students who have a wish list and they know that student's not going to get it. I see third graders in a fourth grade math class because that student is advanced and they want that student to be able to continue with that. I see teachers losing sleep at night because they want their children to succeed. I see teachers advocating for students. It is, it is humbling to see the length that teachers go to to make sure that their children succeed. So I just wanted to know that there is another side to that. And you are more than welcome to come to Violet Avenue at any time and spend time and see some of the richness that goes on there.
Okay. Any other comments before we move on?
Yeah, I just wanted to circle back to some of the comments that were made earlier. Several of us mentioned the Taylor Law or the Tri-Borough Amendment, but I don't think we defined what it is. So for anyone who doesn't happen to know that in the room or via television, I just wanted to quickly define that. The Taylor Law was instituted to stabilize labor relations with New York State public unions. Many of us can't imagine or remember a strike by the police, fire services, or teachers. What it did is it gave public unions the right to organize and collectively bargain, but it made it illegal for public unions to strike. The compensation for that was that after a labor agreement expires, management must continue to observe the prior agreement, including scheduled salary increases based on years of service until a new one is negotiated. And so it's a give and take. It's unique to New York State. It does make it harder for administration and public boards like the Board of Education to control the cost of employment.
Hello. I would like to go back to what this lady was talking about, how like teachers go out of their way to help their students. My teacher, Ms. Wagner, she's right over there. She goes above and beyond to make sure that we have what we need. Not only the Avid program help support kids that don't have much or who have little support at home or who don't feel they have the support they have in school. The Avid program does have that support. And I, Ms. Wagner has like supported me through, what, two years now? And like, I don't know where I would be going if it wasn't for her. So I'm just saying, teachers do push for a lot of things. And not just Ms. Wagner, but I know several teachers who will, like I failed the chemistry regions last year and Ms. Wagner helped me. And Mr. Kudjuski stayed with me in the summer to help me. And then they volunteer their time in the summer to help you. You, the, it's not all the teacher and the school fault. The student has to be willing to go up to the teacher and ask for that help. So, thank you.
Thanks, Hope.
Hope, bye.
Just to sum up though, you were asking for programs, not just what's within and what's being done in the classroom. So I did hear you. Gifted programs are difficult to get started. And sometimes they've been started and then budget cuts have dropped them. So, but it's certainly worth looking. I too am glad that you came here and you voiced your opinion on things and what you wanted to see in the schools because we need more people to get up and tell us. This is what we want. If you don't tell us, you get what we give you. So, but thank you for coming. Anyone else? Can we move on to the code of conduct?
Okay, so the code of conduct, actually, it's the first year in several years where we are not recommending changes. We've, you know, had administration look at it. It's certainly been handed out to every student. We haven't received any information that tells us that we need to make a change. And now we're here in the public hearing. So this is an opportunity, it's not yet adopted, for anyone from the public to speak and let us know if there's anything, any questions or concerns you have about the current code of conduct.
Okay, there is one small change in that a form that has been used for many years was not physically in the booklet for the code of conduct. That will be in this issue. Is that the only change?
It was alluded to in the policy, but I think the attachment wasn't there.
Doug, just a quick question. Is there a special category for these code of conducts? They are required to be reviewed every year?
Yes.
With public hearing.
Right.
Yeah.
And they're part of the policy.
We have policies in almost all the areas, but this one particular area, code of conduct, which deals with the relationship between the schools, the students, and the parents, is something that must necessarily be reviewed every year. And of course, obviously, things are, society changes, our outlook on society changes. And it puts us in a situation where it's almost a necessary thing every year to review what has changed or what has become important and make sure that we are up to date on these things. So this area here is one area which is codified and must be reviewed every year.
It's available on our website. If you go to the policies, it's 5300, the 5300 series of policies. So is there any public comment on, I mean, you would have had to read it.
Do we actually need to open a, open the public hearing on the code of conduct?
Well, we opened, what I said, we opened a hearing on, comment on budget and code of conduct.
Did we do it one? Okay, okay. Thank you. I had just one question. Is the code of conduct part of our district life safety plan? Is it incorporated into district life? Or let me put it this way, it should be incorporated into the statewide or into our district-wide safety plan. I think it's required in the new template.
We have followed the new template. There's certainly some pieces. And the code of conduct itself, as you can see, is its own document.
Yeah, yeah. But I think it has to be at least referenced. I guess that's the point. It's one of the references.
Yeah, we actually just adopted the statewide template and fit our information. So we're in compliance with that as well.
Okay. If there's no other comment, I'd like a motion to close the public hearings.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Now we're back to the regular meeting. There are no agenda modifications for tonight's meeting. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as listed, please?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Let me just scroll down here. Okay, I'm not, it's pride, James. I'm going to give you a first shot again because I talked over you last time. So go for it.
Sweet, thank you. So this first week of APs are coming to a close and there's one more week to come. Much excitement in the AP classes as they get to kind of settle down for a day and then get back into reviewing their material for final exams. Our, for sports, our boys varsity team, track team, won an invitational at Kingston's Tiger Relays for the second year in a row. It's pretty awesome. And in doing so, they broke, I believe, one school record in the four-by-one and three meet records that were held at the meet, which were the four-by-100 meter relay, the four-by-200 meter relay, and the four-by-400 meter relay. And one of our top girls, Sarah Trainer, broke the freshman sophomore meet record in the steeplechase. And our track program is hosting a track meet at our new facility with a total of 20 teams signed up, ready to compete as well. And this, this track meet has grown significantly in the past four years that it's been held annually. Last year, I believe there were 16 teams or 17 teams. And now it's 20. So pretty excited for the, and so the community is invited to come out to support the FDR Track Team as they compete and perform hopefully well. And our sports continue, all continue to work and train hard as the heart of the season has come upon us before championship, championship season begins. Our boys lacrosse team had a game yesterday and they played well. Our girls had a lacrosse game today. And with the tough back-and-forth game, there was double overtime tied. And unfortunately, it ended in a 10 to 9 loss against Cornwall. But considering the past result against Cornwall, which was 14, which was a 17 to 4 loss, there was a big improvement there. So it was pretty fantastic to find out these results. Baseball and softball also had a game today. Unfortunately, I don't know the results of those games yet, but hopefully the next time we meet, I will come back with a good report. Our crew team members, season, they're still going strong, a few more races. And within academics, our English 10 honors students went to go visit the Marist Boathouse, which is, which I believe is where our crew team practices. The reason these English students went to visit the boathouse was because of a book that they read in class called The Boys in the Boat. And some parts of the book describe rowing on the Hudson River. And so they decided to take a trip and see what it was like for crew members to row on the river. And also, our FDR, our high school is having a district arts festival this Sunday, displaying art created by kindergarten, kindergarteners to 12 graders. And it will have demonstrations. It will have art activities, live music, and a ton of art to be looked at and to be admired. And this is, yeah, this Sunday. So it'll be great. That's all I have.
Great, great job, James.
That's all you got?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right.
We, a number of us got to go to the Jazz Festival.
Yeah.
Oh, the Jazz Country. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go. I was really hoping.
It was great. The venue was really nice. Elliot and his crew did a nice job to make it, the cafeteria look not like a cafeteria. And it was packed.
Yeah.
It was really crowded. And the kids had fun. It was really nice. There was a concert last night at the high school.
Another one, another one on Monday.
Yeah, this, I mentioned that because if everybody would take a look at the district calendar for concerts, there are a number coming up over the next few weeks. I enjoy them. I always go to them. They're, it's fun to see what the kids can do. It's really, and you'd be surprised. They're really pretty good. So.
Pretty good?
Well, if you start at...
Pretty good is my terrific word, all right.
If you start at the elementary school concerts and then you go to a middle school concert and then you go to a high school concert, you can see the progression. And for those parents that have, say, a fourth grade violinist, it may be really eye-opening if they went to a high school concert and saw the orchestra play because they may stick with it longer. So.
Just to add one other thing and a thank you to the Rotary. Last night was the honors night dinner that the Rotary sponsors every year for the seniors in the National Honors Society over at the Wallace Center. And I know Chris Berry was there. And, but it was, it was a great evening and I'd just like to thank the Rotary for providing that. The keynote speaker was the head conductor of Stringendo, who is also an FDR graduate. And he did a great job and inspirational speech for the seniors and their families who were in attendance. Congratulations, Mom down there.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Any, anything? Well, I think we're up to the Avid program.
Are you going to start with telling people outside what the Avid program is?
I think that's what they're doing. All right. So, dear Board of Education members, so it's my honor to share this information with you this evening. My name is Kate Wagner. I've been with the district for nine years, three of which have been at FDR, and I've been with the Avid program for three years, two of which with these lovely ladies plus other gentlemen that did not come this evening. They all have work. But we want to tell you about Avid, what we've been doing. And these are some of my Avid seniors and they're going to announce where they're going to college. So Avid, or Achievement Via Individual Determination, is simply but a rigorous college preparatory course which prepares students for success in high school, college, and career, especially students who are traditionally underrepresented in higher education. So Avid's main goal is to close the achievement gap. These students have just done that. So every single one of our Avid seniors is graduating on time with great success. So it's something to be extremely proud of, which we are. So with that said, let me tell you some numbers. So we have 13 Avid students graduating this year. We are the first graduating class for Avid. We have 26. So 26 is the average number of credits these students will be graduating with, when 22 is the requirement for graduation. 27. 27 is the number of honors, AP courses, or DCC courses that these students have taken during their high school career. 65 is the number of applications these 13 students have sent to colleges for acceptance. 860 is the number of community service hours these students have completed within the last two years of being with me. 271,696, our biggest number, is the number of scholarship dollars these students collectively have been offered from colleges and universities. So obviously, I'm extremely proud of them. And so it's my honor to let them announce where they're going to college.
Yay! Hi, my name is Alexandra Ziegler and I'm an Avid senior. I've been in Avid for four years. And if it weren't for Avid and my Avid family, I know for a fact that I wouldn't be where I am today. And at middle school, I was a mid-80s student. And now because of Avid, my grades have skyrocketed into the high 90s and my class rank is number 34. I've been good in class... I've been in classes at Duchess Community College July 5, and I'll be studying the Registered Nursing Program. And I plan on returning next year to FDR to be a tutor for Avid.
Hello, I'm Mary Cruz, and I've been in the Avid program for four years now. And I feel like it's helped me grow a lot out of my shell because I was very shy at the beginning of the year. I didn't really know anyone because I moved here when I was in middle school. But Avid has really showed me a family. And Ms. Wagner has provided me extreme support that I don't get at home for college. And I will be going to Duchess next year and hopefully transferring to SUNY New Poles for their speech and language pathology graduate program they have there. And yeah.
Hello, my name's Tiffany, and I've been in Avid since sophomore year, I think it was. I was placed into Avid not knowing exactly what it was. So I wasn't here as long enough as everybody else was, but you know, okay. So yeah, I was in Avid in sophomore year, not knowing really what it was. It was sort of new for me. So doing the tutorials and helping with homework as well as going over tests and quizzes like that we all have classes together really helped for Avid as well as doing team projects and debates, as well as the field trips for college. Recently going to Mercy was really exciting. Avid's really helped with moral support as well as academic. Freshman year, not being in Avid, my GPA wasn't that high. So I wasn't, I wasn't really getting the support at home as well as academically. Being a senior in Avid today, my GPA is a 91.34. So I'm now, that's roughly a 3.7, just a little below a 4.0. So that's really big to be in Avid as well as having that support from Ms. Wagner and my Avid family. So I really appreciate it. As well as junior year, being in Avid, getting that extra push, taking more AP classes, and recommending to be in it from the, from the lower Avid class. So you know, it was really a big help and a big support from Ms. Wagner and my Avid team to be a part of this program, not knowing what it was initially. So yeah, Avid was really a great help. Thank you.
My name's Izzy Palacios, and this is my fourth year being in Avid. I, when I went into my freshman year in Avid, just like Tiffany said, it was a little different. I didn't really see the full purpose of being in the course. But transitioning from my freshman year to my senior year, to me, it's not like another class. It's another family that I have. The amount of support we give each other is just amazing to encourage each other. Like, we push each other to do our best. It's not a competition. It's the minute we see someone slacking or like, they're not giving as much attention as we know that they can give, we automatically are there to support and motivate them to do the best that they can do. We communicate very well with each other. And the support that we get from Ms. Wagner alone is just incredible. She pushes us to do our best. The work that she makes us do is not work to us because we always see, she always shows us what the purpose is for them. And I am, I feel like I'm 100% ready for college. And I think that Avid has really prepared me for it. I will be attending the College of St. Rose in the fall of 2017. I will be majoring in forensic psychology with a minor in international justice. And I just want to say that Avid really helps with time management and also planning. And sometimes I feel like teachers, I always find teachers asking me where the college preparatory part of it comes in. And since junior year, that's when we've really buckled down on applications and building your resume and getting all that stuff set. I submitted my application to St. Rose in August. I got my acceptance letter the second week of September, and I had my decision by the end of September. So I've been, I knew where I was going by the time senior year started. So and I think that all goes to Avid. So I'm very glad that I was given the opportunity.
Sorry. I'm Hope Dyer, and Avid has helped me in so many ways. I still get a little bit stage fright, but it has helped me learn to speak for myself and not just let things go over, you know, like be looked over by teachers and not be like, why is this that way? It has helped me be an advocate not only for others, but for myself. And like if I do need help and I'm not comfortable with that teacher yet, Ms. Wagner is always right there to help me. She's, she's my second mom. On a serious note, she literally has helped me with everything. If I had an issue with anything, she was there. And I feel like if I didn't have that, I don't know how, like, what I would have done, you know? I will, had joined the National Guard, the Army National Guard, and I actually spoke with that, with Ms. Wagner before I actually enlisted because I was really scared. But I will be taking off in the fall to go to boot camp in AIT. And then I will be attending Duchess in the spring semester. And I will be going for early education.
Hi, I'm Kayla Singleton, and I've been in Avid for four years since my freshman year. And Avid has really helped me. When I first started out my freshman year, I was really shy. I didn't talk to anyone. Like, I really didn't even know anyone. So. And since I've been in Avid, it helped me come out of my shell. I'm more outspoken. Ms. Wagner has helped me to not settle for less and to try harder because my grades were really not that good. But now I'm an 85 and above student. That's really good for me. And now, in the fall, I'll be going to Johnson and Wales, and I'll be majoring in business because I'm going to open my own business, a salon, because I go to Boise for psychology.
So as you can tell, they're amazing kids. The kids that can't come tonight, I'll let you know where they're going. We have Tiana Cave, she's going to Duchess for elementary education. Chris LaSella is also going to Duchess. He's going to study psychology and a minor in photography. Raven DeLeon, he's also going to DCC, and he is studying pre-law. Sam Lopez is again, DCC, and he's going to be computer engineering. We have Ed Hewitt, DCC and community, or excuse me, Criminal Justice. And we have Alex Skrock, he's going to SUNY Polytech, and he will be doing civil engineering. Malik is our last student. Malik Smith is doing SUNY Cortland, and he is doing criminal justice. So we have 13 students and every single one of them will be going to college. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies. Not easy to get up and talk in front of people. Good job.
There's a great example of the students at, in our school system. Great job. They're, you can't commend them enough. They've, I'm confident that these ladies are going to be ready for the world and probably take it by storm.
Alright, moving on to superintendent recording. Anything extra?
Nothing extra, no. Just tomorrow, we're, for the first time, we embarked this year part of the follow-up on our employee engagement survey. On opening day, we showed the School Lunch Hero clip from YouTube. And so tomorrow, we are celebrating School Lunch Hero Day. And there are activities in all of our schools. And it's just a way to appreciate and thank all of our, our lunch ladies.
Who do wonderful things. They're really.
Feed your kids every day.
They know all, they know all the kids. They know what they like. They know what they don't like. They know who's going to throw someone away, something away, and they're right on them. No, you're not going to throw that away. They really deserve all the credit that they can, that we could give them because they work hard. Okay, Eric, want to have a presentation on the Family ID present, Family ID from our athletic interim director?
Before I start the presentation, I've been here a year and a half. I'm just amazed at the opportunities the students have in this district. You really do have some amazing students. And it's been a pleasure, you know, working here for the last year and a half. Family ID. What is Family ID? Why, show of hands in this audience, how many have an Amazon account? How about do banking online? How about Facebook? Well, this is no different. You have to create an account. And that can be done on a computer. It can be, it can be done on a cellphone. I, I went to an AD meeting and I heard superintendent from, from Rhinebeck speak and to other athletic directors in local school districts that had Family ID. I'm like, wow, this seems like a good idea. But I wasn't quite sold on the idea. And I ran into Elna, and Elna got a phone call from a salesperson from this company. So we, we decided to embark on a, on a visitation to Beacon, who also had Family ID, a similar district demographics. I still wasn't sold. I took Elna and Sus Erilli down to Beacon. Laura Lee happened to be busy that day. And the nurse walked us through it. And we were like, wow, we can, we can do this. And one thing led to the other, and we decided to embark into Family ID. The benefits to family, it's a huge save, time savings. Right now, our process is paper. This is 2017. Most things are done online now. And now the papers go home, papers get lost. And we're going to go away from paper. And it's changed. And we, we as nurses and the staff, we just met today, we're still working through a few, few obstacles. But we'll get through it. But it should be a huge saving, huge time saving for, for parents. You don't have to print anything, send it back. There's a dashboard on the, on the, on the website where they can retrieve the, they can do the registration and retrieve past information. And there's always seven days a week they can get support through Family ID. And again, benefits to the program, you'd savings. We actually customized what you will see tonight. I'm going to show you what the webpage looks like. So we sat down, Susan, Elna, Laura Lee, we sat down. We actually took a template of another school district, and then we tailor made it to, to Hyde Park. And it's been a work in progress. Every time we think we have it right, we're tweaking it, tweaking it here, tweaking it there. And finally, we did it, we were doing a test right now to see if it actually works. And and the results from the people that are doing the test been favorable. They like it. And, and you can generate reports. Today, we did a webinar on how to generate reports. And the person on the webinar was speaking so fast, it was very difficult to take notes. But the system is very user friendly for both the nurses, the athletic office, and for the parents. In fact, Janet, my secretary and I, after the webinar was over and the nurses left, we said, let's try this. And all of a sudden, wow, man, we're generating some reports. So, you know, it's, it's pretty easy. Few parent quotes, and you can look at as I, as I speak, what districts are doing it right now. Redhook in Rhinebeck, Rhinebeck is in its third year, Redhook is in its second year, Arlington just started it. Beacon is in its first year. And Westchester jumped on board on a coaster last year. So most of the schools down in that way are on board. And I went to an AD meeting. Family ID was there for the whole section nine. That's Orange and Ulster and parts of Duchess. So you're going to see, this is the way of the future. More schools are going to jump on board. So I'm, just give me a second here. Whoop, I can do it there. Whoop. Alright. As you can see, I'm going to jump back to the, to the FDR webpage. It's very end because we, it would be interesting to show you some of the changes we made on athletics. But I've already put Family ID there. Click it. Now you log in. I, I was here yesterday, saved, saved my password. I should really delete that after tonight. So anyway, what, this is what we as nurses and we, and the AD and the athletic office can see. And right now, there's fall sports, there's modified sports, and we have a test. We're going to look right now at, it's not active. As you can see, it's pending. It's closed. And, and then it'll be, it'll be, this test is open, but only people that I sent the link to can really log in and try it. So we're going to go to fall sports. So that's what, that's what parents would see when they, once they create the account, their password, their username. So it's, it's information about, about Family ID and registering for the school district. On the right side, you have the nurse, the athletic secretary, and the athletic director. So if there's a question, parents can email those people. So the parent, the. So now, I'm the parent of a football player. I would then click this little box right here. I'm registering for that sport. Don't worry about this. In some school, it's a field that can't be taken out. In, you know, in some states like Connecticut, it's pay to play. But it's, we can't take the field out. So the parent would click the sport. Now we start, start the registration. Once, once the parent creates a login or creates an account, it's there forever. The parent has two kids in, in, in the, in the system. They will create a, what would you call it? Help me with that. An account for both, both, both children.
Register both children individually.
Children, individually. But it stays there. So the only information they really have to change from sport to sport, and as we go, go through this, is the health information. So it's one time, takes a little time the first, first time you register. But after that, it's very easy. And again, very similar to, we all raise your hands. You all have some type of accounts. So they would do the participant, all the information, birth date, gender, email. It's not required. Anything with an asterisk is required. Cellphone, any, what grade the student would be going into next year. Address. In some cases, sometimes the, the athlete's address may be different than the parent, but it's there. So then the parent would, would input his or her information. If, for instance. Um, if, for instance, we, we discovered in, in the test, if say you don't, you know, some people only have cellphones. They don't have, have, um, have home phones. Um, you could put none or you could put the same number in. Primary address. Or everything that you're seeing is on here.
Eric, can I ask a question while you're like on that page? Uh, how much of that information is associated with a student's ID?
You, uh, I don't, probably all of it, but the two systems don't talk. So you couldn't, you could, if you were talking about...
If I was gonna write a program, I would want everything...
Absolutely.
That's the key, you know? You put a thing, it goes it in.
Right. We asked that question when we went down to Beacon and that was, the answer was no, they don't talk. We, I, I called, excuse me. I, I spoke to, um, Family ID and again, it, um, they don't talk to one another. That's, but you're right. If you were writing it, I would do that.
Well, could you ask them if they have, uh, something called the user exits?
Yeah, after, after the meeting, can you...
If you have a user exit, then our department could write the code to fill it all in.
That would be neat.
Based on the, right?
Okay.
Possibly, if they support that.
So in some cases, you know, you have a, you know, divorced family, separated family, you may need a second parent information. But again, you don't see the asterisk, so it's not required. Emergency contact information, similar. Again, we, we just took this out as being, uh, today, we just took it out as being required as a, but, you know, as an option for parents. Physician, they will put their physician information. And now, they could, if, if they're real tech savvy, they have the piece of paper from their doctor for a physical. They scan it and then they could download it into the, into the program. If they don't, that's okay too, because now the, they could send it by mail, send it in with their, the student, the physical, the actual physical from the doctor. Then now can, here's where the 30-day update, all the information, all the, all the health-related information. Whoops. So, uh, take for instance, if a, if a student parent clicks yes, I, now a box comes up. All right, I have asthma. Maybe a person puts Ventolin or makes a comment about it. But if you, if you pick, push no, as you, you just go to the next, to the next box. And that goes for all of the medical conditions. As you can see. I know I'm going fast, but you get, you get, you get the idea. All right, now. Policies. You know how we give everybody handbooks and they throw it on the floor, you know, it never gets home. Well, here it is. Medical clearance policy, boom, it's right there for the parents to read. Um, advanced placement, that's the select, the old selection classification, seventh, eighth graders, right there, boom. The New York State concussion policy, right there. Whoops, I was thinking, right there for parents to see. Uh, student handbook. And all, some of these documents are from our website. As I, I just showed you on our new website, we put that information there. So we're linked to our website. So the new handbook is there, which, which I worked on with, um, in the fall. We had it reviewed a few times by the high school principal and staff and made some, we did a lot of language changes, formatting changes, so that's all up to date. And then the Hyde Park concussion policy, right there. So why is that all there? So now agreements. Here's where the parent signs or agrees to all the medical information. It's, it's correct. I agree. Name is signed. If the student needs a physical examination by our school doctor, we, they have to grant permission. It's there. Parent, student concussion agreement. Now, now the parent and the student sign it. Electronically. Public consent, not being photographed. I agree. Boom, a parent signs it. Handbook, parent and student sign it. Emergency care, if they need to be transported, um, right here, it's there. So all the information is there for the parent to do electronically. We can then run report, we can then run reports from there. I'll give you a quick example. Here, we did a test with 14 people. I think I registered my, my wife for football. So, these are the fields that we can see as, uh, in the health office and in the athletic office. These are the people that were registered, the sports. And what would happen eventually is if, um, when, when the nurse reviews the, um, the medical history, click here, approve, update, whatever you, whatever we have to do. Update, done. Should that be done. Completed. And we can, hold on a second, I wanna show you a quick support, uh, quick... Quick report. So now, we, Janet and I created a few reports at the end, uh, end of the day today. JV football, whoops, that's a bad example, because varsity girls soccer. We can, we can view who registered for varsity for girls soccer. Not only can we view it, the coach can view it. So the coach on the practice field goes, the kid comes, comes up, says, "Coach, I swear, I handed in the forms. I, I did it." Coach can go, "I'm sorry." It's, he gets the live updates. Sorry, you cannot practice. The one thing I real, I, I put together, which I like, is this one here. The grade, name, grade and, and when, birth date is here and an expiration date of the physical. Physical is good for one year. So the nurse would, would input the date, the, the, the physical date into, into the, um, into the database. And guess what? The parent, 45 days prior to the expiration of the physical, gets an email. Your son is, uh, physical has expired. So that tells the, tells the parent to get a physical. So that's what Family ID is about. We are, we are working through some, some hurdles here right now, trying to figure things out. It's gonna be a work in progress. Uh, probably the first year of this will transition. I'm sure there'll be some paper we'll have to accept. But we're, when we went to Beacon, the, the nurse, I said to the nurse, you know, um, how, how did it go? And she says, "We had 100% participation on, on the, using the website." And, and she pointed out the cellphone, similar demographics, um, and so, but we should, we have the opportunities, make opportunities for people that don't have cellphones or can't do it, or maybe we need to help them. So, and I'm meeting with the middle school PTA next week to kinda roll this out so they know. Sometime, I have a coaches meeting, um, on May 18th. I'll roll this out for them. I'm still working out how they do, we, we connect dots with them, but they'll be able to run reports as well, which is, which is nice. There'll be rosters, accurate rosters. Now, I just wanted to, last thing, I mean, if you have any questions, but if you go, I showed, I showed you Family ID. Medical clearance procedures, everything that you need to know. Uh, concussion information, it's all there. Trial schedule, we have an updated handbook there. Something, I put the Hall of Fame and at the bottom, application. I had a phone call this summer, this, this year, you know, where's the criteria, questioning it? So I gave the information to Janet and I gave it to Pat Moser, who kinda coordinated things. Guys, you know, we need to have some criteria here, you know, somebody just called you on it. So now it's, now it's there. Um, and then eventually, we'll have the list of all inductees. And we just put this on yesterday. Coaches, we'll have the coaching, we'll have all the coaches in, on, um, in the district on, on this, from, at the beginning of the year. It'll be fall, winter and spring. So if I need to get in touch with a coach, the information is there. So that's some of the things we're, we're doing in the athletic program, a lot of change. People have been pretty receptive of some of the change that we're doing. I've always been through, I've never sat still as athletic director, but if there's a way of doing things better, I'm always looking to do that. Um, I was, like I said, I was very hesitant on going to Family ID. Um, and I think the nurses and I, we've had some great conversations on how to do things. The most difficult season is the fall season. Because we're doing stuff now and technically, you cannot register, you can only register 30 days prior to the start of season by state regulation. So we don't open that portal or that website for, for registration until July 14th. Any questions?
Just, it's more of an IT question and I'm assuming that our IT department has vetted this out and comfortable with the security of the data that's going in. Is this, is this something that's housed in the cloud at a vendor's?
I tell you, I'm not an IT guy.
No, so I guess that, that would be the only thing I'd wanna make sure that we've got, you know, full support by the IT people in this.
I took a look at their website. They claim that their data is encrypted. It's housed on the Amazon cloud, which is a fairly secure cloud storage device. They use SSL 3.0 between the server and the browser. And while there are known exploits to that, it's roughly the, the same class of security you'll get from a bank these days.
And that doesn't mean much, I mean, it, the technical jargon you just gave. Eric probably understands it as well as I do. I just want whoever we rely on to look at that kind of stuff to make sure that, that they've looked at it. That would be my point.
In addition to that, according to their website, their privacy policy is about what I would want it to be. They claim that they're gonna protect the, the privacy of our, our students' information and abide by FERPA. So those were among my concerns, was the computer aspects of it. So I have additional questions if you're...
Go right ahead.
So, um, it was initially hard for me to wrap my head around this. It seems like a system that the entire school could take advantage of. However, it seems like you're proposing it as primarily only for athletics.
Most of the school districts are just doing it athletics. It doesn't mean you can't expand it. But right now, I'll be honest with you, I'm a visual guy and I think, I think the nurses can attest to. We're, we're trying to grasp what it really looks like and how it really, really, how you really do things. And so I, to, to expand it to a school-wide, it'll be very difficult at this point, but I wouldn't rule it out.
So what I'm thinking is that a student, as a freshman arrives at the high school and they're involved in athletics.
Yes.
Or a music program.
Right.
They're gonna take an academic field trip. Probably multiple of those activities over the span of their career. And so if they registered their freshman year, that means that they would gain the, uh, the advantages of having to be able to, of being able to fill out forms almost instantaneously for the rest of their high school career without having to send printed forms back and forth and get lost multiple times, fail to be turned in and other, you know, lost on a, on a desk someplace, either at home or in the school.
You must, you must have read the, did a little research on Family ID because those things are possible. And I, I think it was the Rhinebeck superintendent who was going to try to expand it to field trip information. But we're not there yet.
Yeah, so I understand that, that it's, at this point, it's merely a proposal.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, being spearheaded by the athletic department.
Yep.
So it, it does seem like it's got a lot of potential. It's not clear what it's gonna cost.
It was about $1,400 for, for a year. And the nice thing is, Bosse's is, they're working on a coaster right now at Orange, Orange, Ulster, Bosse's through the section nine athletics. So we're hoping to reduce it, I don't know how much it would reduce, 10, 20%, but it's, you know, a little bit over, it would be over $1,000. But like I said, they, um, there's only a few in this county doing it. It's, it's being, uh, there was a big presentation and it was probably 30 or 40 schools in that room listening to the sales pitch by, by Family ID. So I assume that more and more schools are going to, uh, to jump on board, just as we did, just as Beacon did and so on.
Do you envision any of the teams at our school taking advantage of the merchandise aspects of this where? Uh, so for example, I'm familiar with the football team at the high school. In the midsummer, they'll pass around, pardon me, um, a sheet from a local sporting goods store talking about the kinds of packages for equipment that could be purchased.
Are you referring to this on the website? The, I'm not sure what you're referring to. Are you referring to the online store? Where is it? Are you referring to this? I'm, I'm not sure. That's always been there. I know I came here my first, first month and I, I bought my own shirt. That's where, that's where it was.
This is the first time I've seen this.
Okay.
What I'm referring to is, it's, it's fairly common in my experience for clubs or, or teams to make it, uh, to provide equipment.
Yes.
You know, shirts, shoes, socks, that kind of stuff to their teams at a discount. And do you, do you see anybody taking advantage of that in, as part of this program?
I don't know if it'd be part of Family ID, if it's part of Family ID.
Isn't that more from the booster clubs?
Yeah.
It, it is through the booster clubs, but...
You were asking if they would have access to, to this.
Oh, you want them to have access to the, to the database? I'm not so sure I would want that in a way. The only people that have access to that, to this right now, and there are different user levels. Uh, the, the nurses, their secretaries, myself and Janet and then, oh, my secretary. And then, and there's, and I'm the only one right now making changes to what it looks like. Too many hands, just change things. But no, I would not recommend sharing that, no way. No, no, no.
Okay.
Now, could, could we run a report of students on paper with, with their names and grade or what names and sports? Sure, we could do that, but as far as any other information, birth date, um, email address, no, I would not... no, I would not recommend be, be handing that kind of information out to, to booster clubs.
Yeah, I don't think that's how it's intended to be used. Again, I'm just working for limited information myself, but it looks like a given club, or, you know, organization could market, to effectively market to their, their teams.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then you could buy through the, the website, which would make it more convenient for parents.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Ultimately, this is going to reduce the workload on the nurses?
Not really, right. That's what was our big discussion, that was our big discussion today. And we, we have a meeting set up with Dr. Ritter and Pat Freeman. We're still working through some things. We also, I'm going to take, I want to get some more information on some of it from local, local school districts, on how they're processing all the paperwork.
And in terms of planning, I'm expecting that this summer, because it's an implementation year, and because there's still going to be quite a bit of paper from people that are not yet registered, that there may be additional hours. I'm, I'm planning that, so that we're prepared. If we don't use them all, that's fine, but I, I will be looking to approve some additional hours as an implementation summer. And then, of course, we're hoping that it will decrease each year as, as families are on board with it. It should, it promises to save us time, but I know it won't this summer.
No, no way. Actually, I was going to talk to you about that.
Does it mean we have to expand the nurses' department?
Well, the hours for summer, for sure.
And again, you know, this is going to be a learning curve, at least for this year, and maybe, maybe next year. But once students are in the database from, at 7th grade, we're going to have a, a database of everybody's expiration date, which will make things a lot easier on who needs a physical. The most difficult season is the fall, because you're trying to do things now, and for some kids and parents, the fall season is, is 100 years away. And, and now, now it's, now it's July 14th, we open the portal, and, and it's going to take some time. The winter and the spring seasons are the easiest seasons. Why? The kids are there, the coaches are there, nurses are there, everybody's there. But the winters, the fall season is going to be the most difficult, and it has been even in the old system.
I have a question. I'm, I'm just a little concerned, I don't know how they're going to, I really love it, because filling out those forms three times a year, I mean, I, I really like this, so that's, that's not it. But I am concerned about the authorizations, since it's all electronic, you know, I mean, what's to keep the students from creating a user ID and a password and all that stuff, so that they can just, you know, my parents approve and click, click, click?
Great question. What's, what's to prevent them from, from signing their parent's signature?
And I know they could do that on paper too, but, but hopefully there's an eyeball, like you guys might, might catch that.
I'm sure, I'm sure the nurses try to catch it. They try to catch it, but I'm sure there's some that slip, slip past. I mean, you're right, you're right, that's, that...
Yeah, I'm just concerned that the parents, I didn't approve that.
Right, but you, then you gave the password and user ID to your kid.
So, so we're mailing that out? Is that how it's going to happen?
No, they create their own account, their own password, their own user ID. What we're going to do is, we have a letter we're working on right now with the instructions on how to do all that, and we're going to be mailing that out to all 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th and 11th grade parents. But yes, I think, did I answer your question?
Well, kind of, I guess...
They still have, you're right, there is a student who could go in and just...
And we can't protect against...
Absolutely. But that's the same student who could falsify and sign mom's name and hand me that same paperwork.
Agreed.
I can't tell you that, I, I...
No, no.
I can't tell you that I don't go to the registration form and compare the signatures, so I'm trusting on that level that I'm getting...
Right, but initially, the letter would go to the parents. It would be addressed to the parents, and, and so that would be our, that's, that's the way it's...
That's the same level of understanding that we have on paper.
That's fine. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, nurses. Thanks for coming tonight, too.
I just got excited. Okay, you got it.
Good night, thanks.
And what budget is, this is out of the athletic director's budget? That's paying for this? Just wanted to check, you know? Wow, this is the longest, I think, we've ever taken to get to the first public participation. We have a motion to enter public participation, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Anybody like to address the board?
Three, two, one.
There's still a few of you left?
Forget it.
All right. We have a motion to close public participation.
So moved.
Yay, Denise.
Second.
You're giving me a lot of pressure over here.
Any discussion? All in favor?
We got a vote.
Opposed? Subcommittee reports. We, we did have a policy meeting about the Codaconda, but just to confirm that things were what we said they were earlier in the evening, so, any other committees?
Since Tuesday?
I know. Yeah.
He did come in less quickly.
All right, then. Why is it not going down? Oh, it's public. So why isn't there any, any data for this, the architect?
Oh, this is just a discussion, it's under board discussion. We just wanted a chance to talk in public that, right now, if we had a need for architectural services, we really feel that it's time to go out to bid, to have an architect on retainer, and just wondering if there are board members that would want to be part of the process. It's not really personnel. We have a personnel subcommittee, but if we're going to go out and get a request for proposal for architectural services, we'd really like some board member involvement, knowing that you can't have more than three. One would be great, two would be fine, three's not entirely necessary, but as long as you can't go over three.
Perry, you can't hide from this one. You cannot hide from this one. Yeah, okay.
So, if anybody else wanted to be part of that, we...
When, is that coming up soon?
We would want to, we would want to get the paperwork out now and start the process. And so, we envision that, you know, a group of people would begin the process of looking over the people who respond, interviewing some of them, and then maybe take, bringing the finalists here for the full board to look at.
How time is due?
One is fine, one minimally, three max. So, it's really, if you have an interest in being part of that, Perry's got a good handle on what we'd be looking for, if anybody else wants to join him. I know you're all on lots of subcommittees, so we're not looking to add more to your already underpaid plates, but...
Would I be able to do kind of like a ride along and kind of just come along for the process?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Because I would like to kind of experience that.
Okay, great.
I'll join, Perry.
Okay.
Any idea how much time would be involved?
Come back next June, I'll tell you.
Can I, can I jump in here?
Sure.
So, the last time we did a big RFP, it was for the auditors. I think the audit committee met with the candidates on one, one evening for a few hours, and then they brought the finalist, I think, to the, well, actually, I don't know if they had them come to the board before they made the recommendation.
We, we got a description of each group, and then they came and gave us a presentation, and then we picked, if I remember right.
Yeah, we did interview architects for the building condition survey. That involves going through all of their responses to the RFP, narrowing it down, and we probably spent the better part of a day inviting them in. And, you know, we, that was just to do the building condition survey. We may want to spend a little bit more time this go-around. So, I would say it's probably a couple days worth of work, some homework, reading, definitely some conversation and debriefing once we start interviewing.
Some time reaching out to other districts.
Yep.
With the, with the checking references.
References.
Yeah. Has, I'm assuming, well, has there been an RFP drafted at this point, or that, there has been?
Yeah, Elliot and I worked with the purchasing agent. We have a draft. Pete, the purchasing agent, still wants to review it one more time.
I'd like to see that before it goes out.
Yeah, for sure, yep.
So, we've got Dan, Perry, and James. You're good? Very good, thank you.
All right, next up is the proposed calendar for the 2017, 2018 school year. Any comments on that?
I crawled through it at a medium level of detail. The one thing that I did want to point out is that I noticed that this year, Yom Kippur is on a Saturday, and so we cannot possibly take that day off.
So, we have closed, I might think it was Rosh Hashanah that extends over a period of days.
You are.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, is there a question?
No.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I phrased that in such a way as to be, as to obfuscate the fact that we can't possibly make a mistake on it again.
Oh.
For the next two years.
So, right. Yom Kippur is covered, and everything else makes sense.
Where did I see that one?
Do we vote on this now?
No. No. It's usually placed on a following agenda.
I liked it.
Certainly, the snow days and emergency days are well documented.
Crystal.
Yes.
Hopefully.
Yeah, that was very nice.
We worked hard this time to learn from our wayward ways of calendar making.
I, I know that there has been, or we have taken some lumps over the calendar for years. Are there organizations or people who have been more critical of our calendar than it might be worth taking the extra effort to get it in front of them?
We have their, they supplied us with their recommendations.
Okay.
And, so...
Did we, well, so, so to close that loop, did we reply, or did we send them back, maybe a copy to confirm that we interpreted correctly?
No, they're going to see this and know that we interpreted it correctly, so, well, one of the debates that happens in Dutchess County are the Jewish holidays, and one of the things that's debatable, certainly not by the Jewish Federation, but it is debatable as to whether or not you take Rosh Hashanah off, because Yom Kippur is the high holy day. And the county is pretty much divided, and we're, we're right smack in the middle, and we, this year, are taking Rosh Hashanah off. I would say that that's probably, now that we've done that, you would not want to move backwards on that. But this is, this would be, the only other time we had Rosh Hashanah off, it was because we made the mistake of having school open for Yom Kippur and close for Rosh Hashanah, and we wound up closing for both. But this is the first time we're actually consciously taking Rosh Hashanah off. The BOSI's calendar really serves as the countywide model, so we decided to follow the BOSI's calendar, or take the BOSI's lead in the county on taking Rosh Hashanah off. There will still be a few districts, like Wehbituck Dover, out in the eastern, they call them, they're now calling themselves the E5. Rhinebeck and Red Hook are the N2s. We're the M, be all and end all, no. But the eastern part of the county will more than likely be in session, but the majority of the county will be off on Rosh Hashanah, if that helps.
Okay. Moving on to the countywide shared services mandate by Mark Marlon Arrow.
Yeah, the, through the adopted budget, the governor has mandated that the county executives put together a panel for shared services for the purposes of trying to save money and streamline services. So, we got a letter, as did all the school districts and all the other municipalities, saying that if you would like a seat on this panel, you would have to vote on a member to be part of the panel. The first meeting is May 18th, not 17th, as it said in the documents that you have. I got an email today changing it. So, the first meeting of the panel is May 18th at 10 o'clock at Locust Grove, and if you choose to have a seat on this panel, you would have to nominate somebody and then vote on that, and then we would submit your name. I do have the rest of the documentation that outlines the work, but we did include in the documentation, you have the schedule, so you know, you can see what kind of a time When I saw Dear Superintendent, I thought, oh my goodness, but it looks like it's a board member seat. Seeing as I'm not a voting member, and that you have to vote somebody on there and nominate, I don't, I don't, it was unclear to me whether or not you could nominate the superintendent. I'm just, I'm going with the assumption that it's a board member.
Bingo. I think it is actually being interpreted that you do not have to be a board member to, to be the representative.
Oh.
That's, that's an interpretation that I have, am aware of, that other school districts are taking.
Oh, interesting.
Also, interesting enough, have you noticed the return, or the email address for communications on this?
No.
It is, I think it's something like another unfunded mandate. Another state mandate. Another state, another unfunded state mandate, I think. That, the email address, but...
Oh, I, I did not pick up on that, because I haven't responded.
Yeah.
Yeah. And even the letter was a little tongue-in-cheek, you know, this, this is available to you, I'm not forcing you, so there's no expectation that every single school district has a representative, but it's an opportunity for you.
I have, I'll share with you that I was planning on being the representative from the Red Hook School District to this gathering.
Two for one.
And was willing, pardon me?
Two for one.
Well, when I was actually planning on it, although I'm not sure, I may have a conflict on the 18th, when originally it was the 17th at 10 o'clock, that works on my calendar. I'm not sure whether I can clear up my calendar to make the 18th work, so...
But we'll clear your calendar.
So, I'm just saying, I'm willing... Well, if you agreed to do it, maybe we could get you a sub for the 18th. I'm actually taking vacation time. I'm planning on going to play golf in South Carolina, so... No, 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 I mean for the meeting. Oh, yeah, well, it's just the first, there's not that many meetings. It's, there's a meeting scheduled for that day, and then I think there's another one. Was it in June? I think June 25th, or something like that, I think was another meeting.
I pulled up the wrong document.
It's a pretty tight schedule, there's not...
Yeah, it was a pretty tight turnaround to get a...
But, but I do think that there's some opportunities there. I'm, I'd be interested to be at the table for the, for the discussion. So, I am willing to represent the district if I can make my schedule work. Did you do it FaceTime from the 18th hole?
So, I guess Jay and I can look at the, the document and find out how we RSVP. Now, do you want us to put your name in, or it'll already be there for Red Hook?
Well, I think it would need to go in for Hyde Park.
For Hyde Park, okay.
I think it needs.
Okay.
But if someone else is interested, I don't want to take a spot that somebody else might want. You can eat down there. I don't think I could commit to the time off work to go to the mall.
It's two meetings so, oh, additional... It's two meetings so, oh, additional meetings to be scheduled as necessary, yeah.
I'm looking at these, and I'm not, I'd have to, I'd have to check on a few things. I don't know that I can commit tonight to doing it.
I have a conflict on every one of these dates.
What was that?
It said I have a scheduling conflict on every one of these dates.
Denise, know that, know that...
It's conflicting with my free time.
And know that it's, the first meeting isn't May 17th, it's May 18th.
Right, that's what I'm looking at.
And again, you know, there, there's an obligation for them to share all this. This will all be shared with us. If you feel you can bring some value to the conversation about countywide shared services, that would be a reason to join, or to just hear firsthand what the conversation is. So, you want to get, I don't, I'm confused where we're going with this.
I just, I just need to, because these all fall on, I'd have to check my work schedule, I mean, that's, that's my issue.
I think we can only nominate one person.
So, let's nominate Perry.
Okay. And you'll be as, you can just say Perry if you go to a meeting for him. I don't think anybody's going to...
That's what, that's what I'm, I'm suggesting, if maybe the 18th, I might be able to pull off the 18th.
Oh, okay.
If you couldn't go to the 18th, and it's hard to take notes.
We can share the secret handshake for the meeting.
And, and, yeah, I might be able to pull that off, but I don't know if I can, I can manage all the meetings.
Great.
Why don't we do this, throw my name in, and then we'll figure out.
Okay.
I've got a mask that she can wear.
Do we need a motion, or are we just...
A rubber hood?
I think we just decided, we don't need a motion, yeah.
Great, let's...
Well, I don't know, did it say we needed to vote on it?
Yes, you actually have to have...
Yeah, I think you do need to vote.
All right, kind of a nomination for Perry to be...
I'll nominate Perry.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion on that? All in favor of Perry being our, there you go.
Getting help.
We discussed compensation, you didn't vote.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Any discussion on that? Yes?
I, I don't understand what the contracts for health and waiver services are, really. I see that there, there's all of these, so I know that there's, they're, you know...
Linda, you are?
Sure.
We obviously have to have them.
Yep, so, these are contracts with other school districts for health services that they provide to our resident students that attend private or parochial schools within their school districts.
Oh.
And we do the same thing, we, we bill other school districts that have children that attend St. Peter's, because we provide health services to those children.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
It was actually interesting to see the variety of costs associated with it.
Yeah, and I compared it to ours, because the board...
Yeah, curious, what is it?
Approved our rate, I think in the fall, ours is about eight hundred fifty, eight hundred fifty, or eight hundred sixty dollars a student.
Which would be lower than most of those.
Over one.
Well, one, yeah.
Hey, maybe we find a funding stream.
We're more efficient. All right, all in favor? Oppose, thank you. And should bring us down to special ed. Have a motion for special ed placements, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Dan?
I've reviewed the packet and recommend stop motion as presented.
All right, all in favor? Oppose, thank you. My motion to appoint election officials, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? That would be for the budget vote, and all in favor? Oppose, thank you. Yeah, a motion for 12.3 designation of the canvassing of affidavit ballots.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Oppose, thank you. You have a motion for the memorandum, memorandum of agreement with the Hyde Park Teachers Association?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there?
Yeah, can we just give a definition, so people know what the sources of strength is?
Yeah, I can explain that. It is a grant that we have for this year and next year. I believe it's University of Rochester, and they provide all the training. So, our piece is that, it's basically looking for leaders within the school community to pass positive self-esteem, and it's like in suicide prevention, drug prevention kind of program, and looking for ways to have positive messaging in the, in the building. So, there are students who are selected, and adults who work with them after school hours. So, this is, you know, a stipend to, to support that work.
All right, all in favor? Oppose, thank you. And I have a motion for 12.5 engagement letter for S&amp;P rating. I wasn't sure exactly what that ratings were for, but I was going to ask that.
So moved.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Yeah, could, could we get like a two-sentence description of exactly what that is?
Sure. We're currently, well, we currently just sold a bond for the $3 million capital project at the middle school, the heating project. So, before we sell any bonds, we have to have a, a new credit rating done, so it was done by S&amp;P. Normally, we have the approval for the rating beforehand, but our financial advisors told us to have the rating done now and sell the bond, because the Federal Reserve is expected to raise rates again in June, when it was originally scheduled.
S&amp;P as in Standard and Poor's?
Standard and Poor's.
All right. All right, all in favor? Oppose, thank you. Moving here. I have a motion for 12.6 professional medical service agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one?
Can I get a two-sentence description of what this is?
Yep.
It always unnerves me when it appears to be unlimited, you know, there's no, there's, there's no restriction, you know, that says that it's up to this amount, at least I didn't see it as I was going through it.
So, this is only the second time that you have seen a similar agreement? And this had to do with a change where our district physician, for really good reason, was not comfortable signing scripts for related services. And we have a lot of families who, you know, don't get those scripts back for occupational therapy, physical therapy from their doctor, and then we can't provide services. So, this is a way to make sure that that happens. So, we did it for the first time last year. And I do recall you talking about the limit. I think it does say that here, but I'll check, I believe, oh, no, that's the insurance part. So, I'll take a look, I know that it, it wasn't that much, but...
Well, and I guess the other side of it, is there an accompanying purchase order that goes along with it?
They have to bill us, they have to send us an invoice only if we use the service.
Okay. So, there's no other vehicle other than this as our agreement, so...
So, after the contract is executed, there will be a purchase order issued? And it's usually the estimate of what we expect to spend for the rest of the year.
Okay, so there is some place, I'm just looking for something that says, this is not a $100,000 contract, this is a $5,000 contract. That's all I'm looking for, is if we've got some control over it that way.
And we have to ask for each one. It's not like it keeps going without our request.
Right.
We request the services, they do it in invoices, so...
Yeah.
If we don't request the service, they can't do it.
Correct.
But the service is at an hourly rate.
Right.
For the medical review services, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think what Perry's looking for, too, is some checks and balances to make sure that, you know, there isn't a relationship between somebody who's billing us and somebody who's saying, yeah, we're using your services.
Right.
So, maybe we could come with the information, we anticipate using X amount of services, we won't sign a purchase order for more than this amount.
Yeah, that, that would work, that would, that would be comfortable, yeah.
All right, all in favor? Oppose, thank you. I have a motion for 12.7 special education services.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Oppose, thank you. 12.8, another special education services agreement, I have a motion for that.
So moved, second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Oppose, thank you. I have a motion for public participation, please.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose, anybody like to address the board? All those few people that are left, way back in the peanut gallery?
Are they awake back there? Yes, they are, they're good, didn't they?
Still smiling back there.
That's the scary part.
Those are spec, those are the, those are the special seats.
It'll leak in the...
That's the mezzanine, that's the mezzanine section. All right, have a motion to close, public participation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose, thank you. There were no other matters, it's deemed...
Actually, can I, I don't know exactly when the appropriate time to bring this up, but May 6th through the 12th is Nurses Week. And I just wondered if we have anything planned to, I mean, we certainly value our nurses and what they do for us.
Good one.
I would, I always feel like they're perhaps are the underappreciated population of our organization. And maybe somebody can make some cookies, something.
I don't, I don't know if the buildings have anything, do you know, Aviva?
Usually, the buildings do, yeah, I buy them personal things every year. But I do know that there's staff appreciation weeks, that are included in that, in the buildings. It's usually the same week.
All the, all the PTSAs, or the PTAs and the PTSAs do a staff appreciation in all the schools, for all the staff, not just for teachers.
During that same week, it's staff appreciation?
Well, it, it, they encompass, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, but they always encompass the whole building.
Okay.
It's not specific to nurses.
It just happens to be that that is nurses.
What were those dates?
May 6th, which is...
Next week.
Yes.
Starts Saturday and runs through next Friday, the 12th.
So, it's the same week, right?
Well, I don't know.
I don't know.
Is it, is it the same? It is, thank you, teachers, help me out here.
I got my email out early, because I thought it was this week.
All right, thanks Perry.
Yep.
Okay, upcoming meetings. Sunday, May 7th, 1 to 4 District Art Festival and FDR Senior's Art Show, that is at the FDR High School. Monday, the 8th, 7 o'clock, Middle School Concert Number 1, at the middle school. Wednesday, the 10th, 7 o'clock, Middle School Concert Number 2, at the middle school. Thursday, the 11th, at 7 o'clock, is Netherwood Spring Concert. Is it at Netherwood this year?
I'm not sure.
All right.
Location's...
Normally, it's at FDR.
Yeah, but I, I, yeah, I, I would double-check those, don't, I...
Okay. All right, we will, we will, it certainly will be on the Netherwood website.
Right.
All right. Friday, the 12th, 6 o'clock, FDR plays Music in the Parks at the Vanderbilt Mansion.
I'm not sure if we are playing at the mansion, because on 12th, is this an evening concert?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, just making sure.
Okay.
Because there's a, there's a day concert in, down at Six Flags, or around New Jersey area.
Oh, yeah. This is the one...
All right. So, this is another one?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Monday, the 15th, 7 o'clock, FDR Spring Concert Number 2, at FDR. Tuesday, the big one, the 16th, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM budget vote and Board of Education election. Also, a Board of Education meeting after the vote ends, at the middle school. Tuesday, also the 16th, oh, they did that again? Wow. 7 o'clock is the Middle School Concert Number 2, at the middle school, while the budget vote is on.
Yeah, the board discussed that a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I know, I mean, it's, we've gotten dinged in the past for it.
I know, but the board made a decision a couple of years ago to keep doing it.
Oh.
Yeah, we had a big discussion, and the board said they wanted to keep the concert on that night, even though some people were unhappy about it, and why not have people see what we're doing? We have many, many concerts, so why not? Yeah, this was a big conversation, so...
I'm sure.
It was definitely, yeah, it was definitely a board decision to keep it on that night. We can, if people want to revisit it, revisit it, but it was a board decision to keep it.
It would be the May, I'm just checking something, hold on. 22nd. I have the 22nd of...
I move to adjourn.
Empty, no, we're not, we're not done yet, quite. We'll be done real soon. Okay. Monday, the 22nd, 7 o'clock, North Park Elementary Spring Concert at FDR. Tuesday, the 23rd, 7 o'clock, Violet Avenue Spring Concert at Violet Avenue. Wednesday, the 24th, is FDR Award Night at the FDR High School. And Thursday, the 25th, at 7 o'clock, is the next full board meeting at the district office. Now, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Actually, could I just mention that there is the Dutchess County School Board Association Annual Meeting is June 1st, and it's going to be held at the Kipsey City School District, district offices. And all board members are welcome to attend.
All right.
You should have received an email, I think, to that fact.
Okay. Now, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Oppose, thank you.